I called out one other regular meeting for the Town of Gilbert Planning Commission. First item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you can all please stand, please.
To the United States of America, to the republic which stands on a nation under God, to the physical liberty of us all.
Next item is roll call.
Chairman Anderson?
Yep.
Here.
David Caveney?
Here.
Greg Froelich?
Here.
Brian Johns?
Here.
Les Smith?
Here.
Philip Alabrandi?
Here.
Angie? Absent.
Thank you. Before we do approval of the agenda, we skipped over discussion of the regular meeting agenda when we were in study session. So we have a bunch of items on here that we could potentially move over to consent. So we're just gonna look out to the audience right now. Right now I have a card for item 12 that will remain on the non-consent items. Is there anybody else here that would like to speak on any other item? You don't need -- if you could just raise your hand? Any? Okay. So we'll just go down the list of the non-consent items excluding item 12 to see if the commission is okay with moving these ones over to consent. So the first one would be items nine and 10, Springs at Cooley Station. It's a general plan and zoning commission. Is there any opposition or to sending that one over? Okay. Next one's item 11, Z19-07 Traffic Pad. Be okay with that one? Next one would be item 13. It's a use permit for faux squeegee. Okay. Item 14, Z19, Vidura Santan Department Project. That one's just for zoning. Okay. Next one's 15 and 16. It's a general plan and zoning for Watermark at Gilbert Town Square. Okay. So 15 and 16, we'll leave on the non-consent calendar. 17, 18, are we okay with that one? It's a general plan and zoning for Aces of Gilbert Campus.
Excuse me, Chairman. If you could speak into the microphone, just so we don't have side discussions or like any discussions in the microphone, just so we can have it on the record. Thank you.
Very good with that one? Okay. All right. So the items that will be moving over to consent, items nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 17, 18, unless somebody else has snuck into the room that would like to speak on those cases. Now, see any?
And just a reminder, Chairman, we'll still need to do the whole open the public hearing, close the public hearing.
Yep. Yep. So now we'll go to the approval of the agenda.
Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as shown with the changes that is just discussed, where we add nine, case nine, 10, 11, 13, 14, 17, and 18 to the consent agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second? Second from Commissioner Smith. All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. The agenda is approved. Move along to communications. Communications from citizens. At this time, members of the public may comment on matters within jurisdictions of the town but not on the agenda. The commission response is limited to responding to criticism, asking staff to review a matter commented upon, or asking that a matter be put on a future agenda. Does anybody here from the public would like to address the commission at this time? Now, see any? We'll move along to report from council liaison on current events. Council member Peterson.
Thank you, Chairman. Council member Bridget Peterson here to give you a few updates of what's going on in the Town of Gilbert. Last Thursday evening at our council meeting, we approved a contract to expand the use of the university building for Park University. They have done a great job to fill the space that they're already using, and they're going from approximately 11,000 square feet to 18,000 square feet, and extending the years on that lease also out to 2023. That was a really big announcement for them to make and really great to have them as a partner here in Gilbert. The results of the Gilbert residents survey are in, and did you know that 97% of Gilbert residents rated the quality of life in Gilbert good or excellent? We're always happy to hear that we're doing well by our residents, and we had over 2,500 people actually take that survey. And I know that out of 252,000 residents, 2,500 doesn't sound like a lot, but it's really a high number compared to other surveys that we've put out and had answered by the residents. So I was really pleased to see that. On Saturday, August 10th, we'll be holding a Gilbert Community Bike Safety Rodeo from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM at Santan Village in their events pavilion. So good news is, it's all indoors, so there's air conditioning, so take your bikes and your kids and go down there for that. And since now all three of our school districts are back in school, and I think a majority of our charter schools are back in school, let's remember to please drive safely. This week in particular is stop on red, and it's unfortunate that we have to have a program that reminds you to stop on a red light, but it's a huge problem within the Town of Gilbert. There's been about 90 collisions since the first of the year, and a lot of them are because people are running red lights. So let's not only commit to stop on red this week, but every day, every time you're in your car. And that's all I have for you. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Next, we'll move along to public hearing consent items. All items listed below are considered the public hearing consent calendar. The commission may by a single motion approve any number of items where after opening the public hearing, no person requests item be removed from the consent calendar. If such a request is made, the commission shall then withdraw the item from the public hearing consent calendar for the purpose of public discussion and separate action. Other items on the agenda may be added to the consent calendar and approved under a single motion. The items that will be voting on are item six, DR 19-46 Maserati Alfa Romero, which is being tabled. Do we need to do anything separate with that one, or can I keep that grouped in with everything else?
Let's keep them separate.
Okay. So can I get a motion on that one, Vice Chair?
I move to approve tabling of item number six on our agenda, case number DR 19-46.
Motion for table. Is there a second? Commissioner Alabrandi with a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Item six is tabled. Remaining items are item seven, FM 19-01, DR 17-1197-8, Hampton Court. Item eight, DR 19-40, EOS Fitness. Item nine, GP 19-02, Springs at Cooley Station. Item 10, Z19-06, Springs at Cooley Station. Item 11, Z19-07, Trafford Pad. Item 13, UP 19-23, faux squeegee. Item 14, Z19-09, Vidura Santan Village Apartments. Item GP 19-03, the Aces of Gilbert Campus. Item 18, Z19-12, the Aces of Gilbert Campus. Open the public hearing, and I close the public hearing. Does anybody need to have any conflicts of the agenda that was read?
I do have a conflict with items 17 and 18.
So Vice Chair, can I get a motion on items 17 and 18 first, please?
Chairman, I move to approve items 17 and 18 on our consent agenda.
Motion for approval. Is there a second? Commissioner Smith with a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed say nay. Motion's carried. Vice Chair, can I get a motion for the remaining items, please?
Chairman, I move to approve items number seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 13, 14 on our consent agenda.
Motion for approval. Is there a second? Commissioner Johns with a second. All in favor say aye. Opposed say no. Motion carries. Now we'll move along to public hearing non-consent items. Non-consent public hearing items will be heard at individual public hearing and will be acted upon by the commission by a separate motion. During the public hearings, anyone wishing to comment in support of or in opposition to a public hearing item may do so. If you wish to comment on a public hearing item, you must fill out a public comment form indicating the item number on which you wish to be heard. Once the hearing is closed, there will be no further public comment unless requested by a member of the commission. First item we'll hear will be item 12, UP 19-15 AZ 01-01 Stella. Sidney, please.
Good evening, Chairman Anderson, members of the commission. The request before you tonight is UP 19-15 AZ 01-101 Stella. The subject site is located west of the northwest corner of Cooper Road and Merle Avenue on approximately .83 acres located within an existing industrial area behind that commercial complex off of Cooper. The request before you tonight is a conditional use permit to allow our wireless communication facility in the light industrial district with a planned area development, subject to conditions. This is a overview of the site plan, so this does not include the individual elements. I will get into the enlarged site plan, but just a context overview of where this is located and the setbacks for the enclosure area and the proposed monopole. So again, as I stated previously, it's .83 acres and an existing concrete company slash service yard is what I could confirm. It's a 40 by 40 leasing area, so approximately 1,600 square feet that will be enclosed internally, and it is a 75-foot monopole that meets our regulations for the LI district. Moving on to the enlarged site plan, this shows you a little bit of better view of what's going to be actually located within the enclosure area. As you can see, there's just some equipment along with the actual monopole. Oh, it's not working. There also is an existing light pole in there, and it will just be compacted gravel throughout where there is not actual equipment. Moving on to the elevations, as you can see in the south elevations, you can see a gate and a service door, so that is presently existing on the site. And as we move further over to the north, that will be located internally. So you will see that there is some chain link fence, so it's a two-foot pony wall with the six-foot chain link fence, and that typically is not permitted, and I will point that out, but since it is internal in the site, we do allow chain link in there. The applicant has provided some photo simulations to give you an idea of what it's going to look like from the different vantage points. Again, this is not a concealment pole, it's a typical monopole, but we feel that is most appropriate in this area in an industrial complex. For a traditional conditional use permit, there are four findings that must be found, so I have displayed those to the left, and those are typical that you typically see in a conditional use permit. There are three additional findings that are specific to wireless communication facilities, and I've displayed those on the right. In the report, I have outlined the details of why we find that this does meet our seven findings that are required to approve this conditional use permit. And staff is recommending approval of this project, and I am here for questions.
All right. Thank you for the presentation. Does anybody have any comments or questions for staff at this time? Commissioner Alabrandi.
Chairman Anderson, I had a question. You said because it obviously it's in a light industrial area, we're not going to require the camouflage to make it look like a 75-foot palm tree or something like that. Is that a matter of policy, written policy, or just discretion, your discretion, or it would be interesting to try to conceal it, because you're going to see that for a long way in that area, even from the residential area?
Yeah, Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Alabrandi. So the applicant brought forth originally with a monopole in their pre-application meeting, and that is something that we thought was most appropriate in that area, because it is not a policy that it has to be concealed, but in some instances, when it does not blend in with the rest of the surrounding, and as you stated, when there is not vegetation around, therefore to conceal with, it can draw more attention opposed to blending into the background where this is more appropriate in an area that has industrial features in the back. And it will be tall, 75 feet, but we do believe that it's in a more appropriate location than some other existing poles. It's about 1,500 feet from Cooper, about 600 feet from the residential district to the south, so it is close to those areas, but hopefully with that separation and behind the existing commercial that it will have a little bit more concealment.
So even though the, it's 600 feet to the nearest residential area, and I'm not being obtuse, it's not in their interest perhaps that we do try to make it look a little more interesting than a standard cell box?
Commissioner Alabrandi, it's not necessarily something that's in our code, so it is not something that we did pursue. So that is something that we did not make a suggestion for the area and the type of pole it was. I do understand that it is closer to residential, but it, looking in the context of the area, that is why we didn't pursue it, even though it is within 600 feet.
Chairman Anderson, would it be appropriate to ask for the applicant to voluntarily do that, or am I out of line?
So I can add some color. We've dealt with these in the past. Commissioner Alabrandi shares some of our thoughts in the past, that sometimes absent any adjacent landscaping and so forth, the monopoles with the faux tree skin look more fake and draw more attention than just putting a pole up and let it be what it is, right? So we've decided in other cases that it was just, it really didn't fit and was more distracting when we just ought to let it be what it is, right? We're so used to these now as a, you know, as a society, that it isn't, it isn't a foreign site or a frustrating or irritating landscape profile to see a pole like this, because we know what they're used for, and they're all over the place. Where some, you know, a 75-foot pine tree looking at the elevation would really stick out and probably not look good. So we've actually in the past encouraged moving away from all that extra expense and look when in the end it's just kind of more distracting, so.
Thank you for the clarification. Noted.
Vice Chair, did you have something?
Just was going to echo the same things that have been said by Commissioner Caveney. I'm so sorry. Turned 50 over the weekend. Apparently it's showing, so sorry about that.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else have any more comments or questions for staff? Okay. At this time, does the applicant wish to address the commission? If you could please state your name, address for the record, and you'll have 10 minutes.
Yes. My name is Michelle Lamro, 1433 West Marvin Street, Gilbert, Arizona, 85233. I just want to comment on Commissioner's Alabrandi's comment about whether we would stealth it or not. There's actually a mile away in the middle of a neighborhood, there's a water treatment facility that has an 85-foot monopole that's not stealthed as well. And there's also on the main street, maybe 100 feet, actually a little bit farther away, but there's, there's utility poles that are 75 feet that some have antennas on them as well that are not stealthed. And so I think that when it's on a utility pole, and sometimes when they're not stealthed, they actually do blend in more than when you try to put a palm tree up, and then you have the antennas with the palm fronds sticking out past them. And since it is a light industrial area, that is why we went with what we went with, so.
And I appreciate your point. My only point is that for the residential people 600 feet away for a 75-foot pole, you're going to see it. And this is from a town that's famous for a water tower in the middle of its town square, so anyway.
Sure. I mean, other than that, I just did want to comment that there is a need in this area. T-Mobile is who we are currently putting on the pole. It will be able to house up to three or four additional carriers as well. And we just actually got the latest data on 911 calls, and 80% of all 911 calls are now made on cellular phones. So I know that in today's society and all of the unfortunate events that are occurring, that is something that every commission that we've gone before has asked, you know, do you know what that percentage is of 911 calls that are coming? So I figured that I would answer the question before it was asked. So if you don't have any other questions, I think that staff did a great job.
Okay, thank you. I do have a comment card here. Robert Brooks. Here, Robert. If you could please come up to the podium, see your name and address for the record, and you'll have three minutes.
My name is Robert Brooks. I live at 953 West Hudson Way, Gilbert, Arizona. I've lived here approximately 15 years. I brought this pan with to demonstrate, actually, we just switched over from AT&amp;T to T-Mobile. But if you put the phone inside this pan with an AT&amp;T, you can, you can actually dial in. It will actually ring this phone. And I tried it with my wife's phone, too. So we ended up switching over to T-Mobile because it actually doesn't do that. It doesn't do that. And the reason, I'm really asking you to not build this thing. We've only had wireless internet for about 10 years. Do you really understand what the long-term consequences are to your health and the health of your children and your grandchildren? Have you really thought about it? I mean, Galileo thought it was a good idea when he came up with the idea of how to point a cannon better in about 1,600. In other words, if you knew the velocity of the shell and the angle that you shot it at, you knew where the thing approximately was going to land. The Catholics at the time decided, you know, they're going to be shooting at other Catholics if he allowed this information out. So they banned that book for about 100 years or so. And then somewhere around the 1740s, they released this book about Galileo, about how you can shoot a cannon, point it more accurately. And then since then, we've had, you know, we had the Napoleonic Wars, you had the Civil Wars, you had World War I, World War II, War of 1812. In other words, the knowledge is being used to actually harm people, you know? And that was in the book. I mean, if you ever had a class in physics, that's what they show. They show you a cannon, and it's simple. It's so simple, isn't it? And so is, is the, you know, so is the cell towers. It's so simple, and it's so easy. The problem is, we don't really know what the long-term consequences is. Probably what's going to happen is, in the future, you won't need parks, because people won't go outside. And I say that truthfully to you in the name of Jesus Christ. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks, for your time. All right. Do we have any more comments or questions for staff that we didn't bring up, though? Okay. So I'll close the public hearing and bring the discussion up to the dais. Do we have, want to have any discussion on this? Vice Chair? We don't have to discuss. We can just go straight to a motion.
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
There is one question I'd like to ask for the staff. Is there any, oh, actually for the applicant?
Hold on for a second. Let me just open this. I can, I can open this back up to the public again, right? Okay. So let's open this hearing back up to the public.
I certainly want to address the gentleman's concerns. I had some experience in this industry back in the early 90s, and we were worried about 600 milliwatts being next to your head with a handphone. Is there, is the radiated power from this pole or this unit any more or less than the standard radiated power from a cell tower?
No. All carriers are obligated under federal law to follow the guidelines set forth by the FCC, and T-Mobile operates well below those guidelines, as do all of the other carriers. So, and they are tested monthly to make sure that everything is well below the guidelines that have been set forth.
Thank you.
Do we have any more questions for the applicant while she's up? Okay, thank you. Now we're close to public hearing again. Do we want to discuss, or does somebody want to make a motion?
So I guess just to kind of get some preliminary feedback here, so I appreciate Mr. Brooks willing to come and share his concerns, and thank you to the applicant for some clarification and additional color. I think as, as I look at these cell towers, they add continual ability for our citizens to more, more readily and uninterruptedly connect with their business and their home needs. So I, I think it's great that we're getting more of these. I actually am kind of in a bit of a cell dead zone in my home. I want more near my home, because I really need to communicate out of my home. But, but yeah, so I think these are needed, and I appreciate that this is in an industrial area. I think that's a pretty good place for them, and they found a nice way to fit it in there. And I think honestly, the streamlined nature of the proposed pole will conceal it more than anything else. I do appreciate that it is tall, and it is, you know, I guess there are some neighborhoods 600 somewhat feet away, but I think, I think it's a pretty, pretty clean look and will do its job. So I'm definitely in favor.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else? Well, you're so elegant with your discussion. Do you want to make a motion? Yes.
All right. Chairman, I move to approve UP 19-15 AZ 01-101 Stella, as noted in the report. the report.
Motion to recommend approval is, are you a second?
Second.
Second, I'll give that one to Commissioner for a look. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both say no. Motion carries. For the people that came out here to speak, thank you for your time, it's greatly appreciated. Next, we'll go down to items 15 and 16, GP 19-01 Watermark at Gilbert Town Square and Z 19-05 Keith.
Chairman Anderson, members of the commission, good evening. Just trying to get this to work here really quick. I swear I pushed the button, so. That's weird. It must not be used, because normally it pops up on my screen, too. Okay. Thank you. Chairman Anderson, members of the commission, good evening. This project that is before you tonight is for a general plan amendment and a PAD rezone for Watermark at Gilbert Town Square, just south of our public safety facility. And if I show you the, the brief overview, it's a general plan amendment from general office and neighborhood office to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre, and also a rezone from general office and neighborhood office to multifamily medium. Yeah, yeah. Oh, I thought it did. Which one? The clicker? Technical difficulties here, it's not changing.
Maybe close that, close that there.
Good idea.
Sorry, I'm just gonna.
That's okay. That's okay. Try this again.
Oh, that looks better screen. There you go.
Much better. Thank you, Catherine. All right, thank you, Catherine, for helping me out. So, let's start back over here. So, the overview, it's a 10 and a half, little over 10-acre site, and I already stated the general plan and the rezone is to residential 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre for the general plan amendment, and the rezone is to MFM from two neighborhood, from two office categories. So, for the PAD overlay is, we have a development plan that shows the overall site design and the layout, conceptually at this time, which they'll come in for a design review application later, and then deviations related to building and landscape setbacks, the building stepback and some wall requirements. So, the location of the site, you all know where it is, it's just south of our public safety facility over here, right along Gilbert Road. And currently, there's about four or five parcels that would need to be combined there, so it's just, just right there. The general plan land use map, wanted to show you that really quick. So, as you can see, you have the, the proposed general plan will be changed on both, on the, it's kind of funny that there's two land use designations, but those will both be going away and it'll be, it will be 14 to 25 dwelling units per acre. So, as far as general plan conformance is concerned, I have a few of them here that I just wanted to highlight and talk about. The applicant has stated that they comply with some of the goals of the, in policies of our general plan. So, I didn't list all of them that were in the staff report, I just highlighted a few of them. But basically, in a nutshell, they wanted, the policies that they comply with are the balance of housing types, so they're trying to create, create more than, or develop a neighborhood that's just more than just single-family and balance out the types of housing in the immediate area. Residential development that allows for diversity of housing types, again, same thing kind of with the balance, more than just single-family homes, especially in an, in an area where there's a lot of employment. So, that's also another one of the criteria further on, but they're trying to create also an adequate supply of appropriately zoned land to accommodate a variety of future housing needs. So, again, more housing diversity, and the applicant strongly feels, and so do we, that they're creating housing diversity with this project. So, another housing option that is in high demand in the area, and the applicant states, has stated that multifamily communities are over 90% occupied in, in the Gilbert area. So, it's, it's, this trend is gonna continue for many, many years. It's not like these are only 50% occupied and a lot of them are sitting vacant, they are highly sought-after properties for people to live in. So, again, higher density housing is an appropriate use, it's a, it's a good land use transition from employment and commercial uses next door, whereas you have the Gilbert Town Square and you have our public safety facility and things. So, the applicant feels that it's a good land use transition between those more intense uses and single-family, which you, you see to the south and also to the east a little bit. Here's the zoning exhibit, just wanted to show you that really quickly. Whole thing will be changed to MFM. Now, the development plan. As far as the development plan is concerned, we have six three-story buildings, and you have nine one-story or single-story garage buildings that are gonna be along the perimeter of the site, and a few on the middle. The applicant is request, is proposing 20, a little over 20 dwelling units per acre, about 42% open space, and they have various building setbacks that they're, that they're proposing, about a 60-foot building setback on the north, that were, well, their setback's gonna be 10 feet is per the, what their deviation is, but the buildings are actually set back about 60 feet. The buildings will be actually set back about 130 feet on the east, the, the three-story buildings anyways, and then about 88 feet on the south, and about 30 feet along Gilbert Road. So, there's plenty of setback for these buildings and visual relief and/or a separation from, from surrounding uses. Landscape setbacks, 20 feet along Gilbert and along the south boundaries, and 10 feet along the north. And then they also have a few amenities that you can see along Gilbert Road that they're proposing, a pool, a pool and a clubhouse and things like that for amenities for their, their residents. So, really, the last thing I wanted to talk about tonight before I end the presentation are the deviations. They're proposing six deviations, total deviations. And, so, the landscape setback and the building setback along the north property line is the first deviation. It's supposed to be 20, that's what the code requires, but, or 30 for the building, sorry, and 20 for the landscape, and they're proposing 10. Along the, so the next deviation is for the maximum height of fencing, so our minimum heights for separation fencing. And you can see that in the table, what they're proposing. Six feet along the north for a solid wall where eight feet is required. Along the east property line, eight-foot fencing is required, and they're proposing an eight-foot tall view fence. Along the south property line, they're proposing a six-foot tall solid wall for the existing wall to remain, and town staff are actually recommending that it remain eight feet in height. The last deviation tonight is for a building stepback deviation. Before I get into this one, staff wanted to, upon speaking with the applicant, I wanted to clarify that what they are actually requesting tonight is not an eight-and-a-half-foot stepback, they want, they are requesting a 10-foot stepback, so I wanted to actually modify that to 10 feet. One-and-a-half-foot difference in, in that, that deviation, and staff, the one-and-a-half feet, we're indifferent to that, so we, we'll also be supportive of a 10-foot instead of an eight-and-a-half foot. Just wanted to bring that up really quickly. As far as those deviations are concerned, we're supportive of all of them, with the exception of the south property wall. We strongly feel that that south property wall would need to remain eight feet. We've had discussions with the applicant on this, and you expressed concerns at the last planning commission meeting concerning that as well. But for us, it's more of a safety and structural integrity aspect of that wall, and really a visual impact thing from, from potential homeowners that could live there. We have no clue what that property to the south is going to be developed as in the future. If it gets developed as single-family homes, and there's, I don't know how many there could be along that boundary, they're gonna want that privacy and that, that buffer, or the, at least the privacy, so people from the parking area can't look into their backyards, and it would create a nice visual barrier even if they're standing in their backyard. But staff is, is highly recommending that, that the required eight-foot wall be constructed along the entire boundary. The actual existing six-foot wall is only about three-fourths of that property boundary line. The rest of it towards the back is actually some type of rail fencing. So, we would be recommending that that eight-foot tall block wall be constructed along the entire south boundary line. So, that is it on the deviations. Public, some public notification, notices of public hearing were, were published in the newspaper. Applicants sent notices to the neighbors, posted signs on the site. We did have a, the applicant did have a neighborhood meeting on February the 19th, approximately five residents were in attendance. They were generally supportive of the project, and you can see on the screen in front of you some of the concerns that they had. One of the, the biggest concerns they had was concerning security and privacy on that eastern property line. They were concerned with people potentially being able to jump the wall, or even, even being, that wall being accessible either through vehi, with vehicles or, or pedestrian access, and the applicant has made sure that that's not going to happen. There will be no vehicular access or pedestrian access into the Settlers Point neighborhood, and what they are proposing in that deviation is to have an eight-foot view fence, which will be 10 feet away from the existing HOA block wall, and it will eliminate a double wall situation, and so that people can see into it and eliminate any, any, any crime or any concerns that would, could take place there. But the eight-foot view fence, they're proposing eight-foot in order to stop people from potentially climbing over it and getting into the, the residential development. So, we, we are in support of that. Staff has received a letter from the Chamber of Commerce in support of the proposed rezoning and minor general plan amendment, and I know that that's in your packet. So, to end the presentation, staff recommends that you forward, that you make a favorable recommendation of this project for the general plan amendment and the rezone to the, to the town council. And, and I did wanted to show, wanted to show you just one of the conditions of approval, condition number five, which shows the table of all of the deviations. And I would like to note that, of course, we would be proposing to modify the building stepback condition to state 10 feet instead of eight-and-a-half. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. And the applicant is also here, and I believe they may have a brief presentation and can also answer some questions for you as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you for the presentation. Does anybody else have any comments or questions for staff right now?
I have a question.
Commissioner Smith.
So, Keith, on the south wall that you said is a six-foot, six-foot wall, are there not some structures that are incorporated into that wall?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Smith, no, there are not any structures incorporated into that wall. You will have the wall, and then an approximately, I believe, a 20-foot setback, a landscape setback, and then you'll have a garage, one garage building, a one-story garage building, and then parking stalls.
And what I'm suggesting, what I'm asking is, the current, the current existing wall and the neighbor, yeah.
Oh, Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Smith, I apologize, I guess I didn't understand the question. I am not sure. I, I would like to defer that question to the applicant to answer. I, I do not know what is on the south boundary line of that property, and if there's any buildings or structures that are inhibiting the removal of the wall.
Okay, thanks. We'll look to the applicant to answer that question, and thanks.
Chairman.
Vice Chair.
Keith, with, with this request of having a six-foot instead of an eight-foot wall, are there any different zoning categories where we would, where six-foot is acceptable, or is it always an eight-foot? That just standard and, I guess that's my question.
Chairman Anderson, Vice Chair Bloomfield, when adjacent to multifamily, it's standard in the land development code that, that an eight-foot wall is required adjacent to residential uses and, and non-residential uses.
So, it's just always around multifamily?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Bloom, Vice Chair Bloomfield, I, I can't think of any off the top of my head of any other zoning districts that would allow a six-foot wall. It seems to be pretty standard, it went, it went adjacent to multifamily.
Okay. What, and you may not know this, but the applicant should, what's the wall currently on the north side of this property, between the town property and, and them? I know there's, there's a significant SRP corridor through there that isn't owned by the town or them, it's just an easement through there, and that will remain, and so, given that condition, I'm, I'm willing to entertain it there. I would think that they would want the eight-foot wall just for their residents, but if they're requesting the six-foot, I think I'm okay with that, but what's there currently?
Chairman Anderson, Vice Chair Bloomfield, currently on the north property line is a chain-link type fence, and it's about six-foot tall. And then you have the, the 75-foot SRP easement, I wish I could show it to you. The SRP easement, 75 feet, and then you have the north property boundary of the public safety facility, and they actually have a wrought iron fence that's about eight-foot tall with columns every 100 feet or so.
Very good. One last question. Ten-foot tract on the west side of the fence for Settlers Point, what is that intended to be for?
Chairman Anderson, Vice Chair Bloomfield, I honestly have no clue. I would have to defer that to the applicant. I, I do not know what that tract is used for. Could be drainage, retention, but I'm not sure. I, I think the applicant may have more information on that.
Okay.
I would prefer to defer to them on that one, so.
Very good, thanks.
Anyone else? Commissioner Al Brandi.
Thank you, Chairman Anderson. Keith, I have a question, first of all, maybe from the applicant, I'd like to understand why they're asking for a deviation on the north wall and the south wall, eight versus six? And from the satellite imagery that we were provided, it appears there's a existing residential, looks like a rather large compound, which is where that six-foot wall is in existence. So, are we talking about ripping down that existing wall and putting up an eight-foot wall? It's kind of confusing. If I've lived there for a long time and I have a six-foot wall, all of a sudden it's gonna get taken down and I'm gonna have an eight-foot wall, whose property is that wall on now?
Chairman Anderson, Commissioner Al Brandi, I'd be more than happy to defer to the applicant on why they're proposing what they're proposing. I can explain it, but I think the applicant has a better handle on it.
An action deferred is an action completed, so defer on, that's okay.
That is actually a good point, that we know whose property this wall is on, because if it's on the south property, I don't think the applicant has a right to even touch that wall.
Chairman Anderson, I've been told by the applicant that the wall is more on the southern property than on their property. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm correct, it's about, not even barely two inches or so onto the, onto the applicant's property. It's more on the south property. It was constructed by the property owner to the south. I don't know when it was constructed, but he has some kind of, it's a single-family home, he lives there, it's, he has events there occasionally, so, and I don't know what his intentions are with his land for the future, but I think the applicant can maybe expound on that a little bit more as well.
So, from the towns' point, how do you enforce a, a land improvement onto somebody that, that improvement is not even on their property? It's on someone else's property. How, how does a town enforce something like that?
Chairman Anderson, very good question. Well, it's, it's in our land development code, so.
Yeah, well, there's a lot of things in the land development code, but that doesn't really answer the question. If something is on someone else's property and the applicant is, you're forcing the applicant to do something that's not on their property, how does a town enforce that?
I, I don't know that answer. It's some, I mean, we don't want a double wall, I mean, or a dual wall, double wall situation. That's, so I guess the only good solution would be for the applicant to work with the property owner to the south to, to replace it, if they're gonna, if we're gonna require them to comply with the code. But I, that's a very good question.
Okay, so I think, we're, are we good? Do we want to bring the applicant up? Sounds like we have some questions for him. So, thank you for the presentation, the applicant, if they'd like to come up.
The applicant, if they'd like to come up? Uh, state your name and address for the record, please, and you'll have 10 minutes.
I don't think it's her hair. Yeah, just, you can do that, that side-to-side heroes. Down here, it looks like it works, too. Perfect. Okay, we'll get there. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Keith.
Good afternoon, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission. My name is Ralph Pugh. My office is 1744 South Val Vista Drive, Suite 217 in Mesa. Thanks for the opportunity to be with you this evening and to take a moment of your time to address a couple of the deviations that we're requesting. Uh, hopefully, we do not need to rehash all the general plan and, and zoning issues. Let's focus on deviations, and if you have other questions, I'd be happy to address those. But with us here tonight is Mr. Jesse Hotalin from Watermark Residential. He's the Development Director. DJ Stapley from our office is here. You've got Ben Cooper, our, uh, land planning consultant, and of course Greg Davis is our land planner. So, the whole group's here, the band's back. And so, we're ready to go this evening. Let's just start, if we can, with this exhibit to demonstrate what Mr. Newman was saying. And first of all, we want to thank Mr. Newman for his presentation, his work with us and the entire staff on this project. It's a unique site, uh, commissioners. When you think about it, it's more than three times as long as it is wide on the Gilbert Road frontage, and it's a difficult site to develop, and one that we believe creates the proper transition both from a zoning and from a general plan point of view. So this map illustrates the actual building setbacks. Just so you get our minds around what we're talking about, these buildings where the apartments are actually located are three-story. And so you see on the north side, they are 61 feet from the property line and 128 feet, roughly, to the, the town's building on the north side. Take a look over at the east, where our neighbors are, that we've met with and talked to and had dialogue with. We moved that building 121 feet west of the property line. And then on the south, you'll notice, uh, where we're dealing with the southern wall and the Rusty Ranch property, varies from 88 to 94 feet. That's the building, commissioners, not the habitable area of those buildings. The habitable area is the key to the step-back issue that we'll talk about in, in just a minute. So, perhaps the best use of our time here is to look at the first issue that many of you may have questions in your mind about, and that is, why are we asking for a six-foot wall on the northern boundary? Where generally, um, uh, the eight-foot wall would be required. So this exhibit, uh, right here demonstrates in pictorial form what we're talking about. So if you look at the property and you look at the top of the plan, the solid red line is the, is the property boundary. The blue area next is a 67-foot-wide Salt River Project easement. Then you have additional distance to the town fence and the town buildings. So, our thought process on that is, why? What is the purpose of the eight-foot block wall in the first place? So if we ask ourselves that with respect to the code, typically, eight-foot block walls separate multifamily from single-family, and sometimes industrial from single-family. Now and then, commercial gets separated by those walls. So what are we separating from here? The purpose of the eight-foot block wall is not necessary on this site because, as you see, on the left now, the site is in green, you have the SRP easement in yellow, and then you have even more space till you get to the back end of the public safety building of the town and the parking garage. So it's not like the eight-foot wall is either protecting privacy from adjoining landowners or providing any additional security. There's no need for security here. You have this open space, and certainly, our residents have no motivation to hop a fence and go into the easement area. If they wanted to do that, whatever trouble could be caused there, people would just walk in from Gilbert Road. You come down here on the bottom where you see, um, where you see this spot, well, if I get this to work. Anyway, you can see where the easement connects with Gilbert. You could just walk through there. So, I would just urge you tonight, as the applicant, we would ask you to ask yourself, why do we need the eight-foot block wall, and what are we trying to protect from at that location? Then, if we could take a look at the, um, there's a good shot, that's the easement area. So our property that we'd like to develop is on the right, and the public safety building is over on the left. And that space will remain like that after development. So here's the really unique situation. Now we're on the east side. Why do we want to do an eight-foot, um, view fence rather than a solid-block wall? This is a very, very unique circumstance. Two of our neighbors are here tonight who live in the homes adjacent to this. So as you look at this map, the solid red line on the right side is the property line of the owners that own the home on the north side of the cul-de-sac and on the south. And there is a wall there today. The odd thing is, to the left of that, or the west, is a 10-foot tract dedicated on the subdivision plat of Settlers Point South. And you raise a really good question, commissioners, why is that tract there? We believe that it's for access to the irrigation mechanisms and systems, but we don't know for sure. All we know is, we don't own it, our wonderful neighbors don't own it, and we need to deal with it in a fair way. So what should we do? Our solution and recommendation is, where you now see the dashed red line, we would propose an eight-foot wrought iron view fence. That would provide our neighbors with more security, and it would provide visual permeability into that 10-foot area. So you don't have two, uh, block walls 10 feet apart, creating an area where you can't visually see into it. So that's the reason we're asking to do an eight-foot view fence there. Now, this is a good shot of it, too. If you, if you look at this, if you look on the left side, the existing block wall, that would be the neighbor's block wall, and then the dashed red line would be the new eight-foot view fence. And the land in the middle is that, uh, unknown HOA land. We think it's for access, for irrigation, could be drainage, but it's not really clear why it was done that way in the first place. It's very unusual. So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that now takes us to the real question on the southern boundary. What do we do with this situation? So in answer to the chairman's question about who really owns that wall, here's the answer. The survey, we didn't put the whole survey on the property, but if you start in the lower left-hand corner, where you see the red dashed line, that's the existing block wall. 100% of that wall is on our adjoining neighbor's property. It was done exactly right. Only the north face of the block of that wall is right on the property line. So that whole distance from the left over to where you see the notch out, the little square, is right on the money, right on the line, and the block wall's on our neighbor's property, and the face of it is right on the property line, where it should be. So then, in answer to the question by Commissioner Smith about, is there any structure that creates part of that existing wall? The answer to that question is, yes. So as you move to the left, and you see the little notch out there, that's actually a structure on the neighboring property to the south, and the northern wall of that structure then becomes the extension of the block wall. All right? And it actually encroaches onto our property by four inches. Okay? Then, east of there, where the solid red line is, that is a, a rail fencing. It's not a block wall, and it's about two inches over onto our property. So what do we do about this, commissioners? How do we deal with this? And I think the question raised by the chairman is a very, very good one, that we're not sure how the code addresses it clearly. First of all, the stipulation is that we, the applicant, remove the existing wall and build a new one. Well, just start right there. We cannot do that. That's a condition that's impossible to perform because we have no right to go on our neighbor's property and remove that wall. The second point is, where you see the solid red line on the east end, that's a rail fence. So we could build a block wall on our side right next to that. Because being a rail fence, you don't have those common block walls together that create spaces that you can't see into. So we could do that without any problem. But I, we think the solution here, commissioners, is to let this matter evolve. Because the property owner to the south is selling the property, it's listed for sale, there's lots of interested parties. Given the nature of the market today and the urgency of builders to get moving, we would expect to be in dialogue with the, a builder someday soon, hopefully, about what to do about that wall. But right now, we can't do anything about it, and the owner to the south has no motivation to deal with us on that topic because he's in the mode of selling. So, that's our position about it. Those are the reasons why. Um, and in addition, we don't know what's coming to the south. Our suggestion is, let's move forward, leave the wall where it is. We'll build a six-foot wall on that east end, and as things evolve, we could work together with a new property owner. But we thank you for your patience tonight, commissioners. Hopefully that explained those situations. The number-one thing is, we urge you to please vote favorably on a recommendation and move this to the council. If you have pause or a dilemma about the eight-foot block wall, and how do we deal with that, please let us work on that from here out with the staff. Uh, our preference is to move forward. We're not afraid of paying for a block wall. That's not the issue. It's practically, it can't be done in this moment. Mr. Chairman, thank you very much for your patience, and be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Uh, let's talk to the other commissioner, Froelich.
Yeah, I just had one question on that block wall to the south. You mentioned that there, there'll be a new property owner in the future. How would, how might we handle that in the future? Can we just add to the existing wall, or would we replace that wall? And then, would we, uh, you were talking about putting in a wall there to the east to complete that segment where there's a fence. Would we just add to that to make it an eight-foot height? Should that owner, uh, want that?
Well, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Froelich, the answer to your question, in my opinion, having seen a few of these and a few years of this business, the way to do this, I believe, is for the two parties, the two landowners. Once we know what's happening to the south, they should get together, and they should negotiate between themselves a common wall, party-wall agreement. It would be in their, both of their best interests, and it could comply with the town code. So that's a perfect situation, Commissioner, as to how to resolve it and who pays for what. And, that agreement can specify maintenance obligations and how to keep that wall in good shape over time. So that's the first suggestion I would have. On the east side, where this, where the fencing is, we can build that wall now, and we're happy to do it as part of our building permit, uh, for the project. Again, because it's, it's a fence, totally permeable, and therefore, we could build a, in our opinion, it should be a six-foot wall, so it's consistent. But if you insist on an eight-foot, we would do that there. It's just we can't solve the western portion of that wall, especially with the owner's building constituting part of the wall. So, I hope that answers your question, Commissioner Froelich.
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Caveney, did you have something?
So on the eastern, the eastern tract that you talked about, uh, first of all, how tall is the Settlers Point wall, the solid wall? Do you know?
The Settlers Point solid wall, let me get to this.
That's six. Okay, that's six. I see it on your map.
It's six feet, yeah.
Okay, good, good. And you mentioned that you suspect it's for access to irrigation. So, are you, are you building any access points for that? Uh, how do they get there? How will they get there after the fact? Yeah.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Caveney, that's a really good question. Remember the picture of the easement area between the, the public safety building and our wall, our, our fence?
Yep.
You can go right down there and then turn into this area and gain access to it.
Okay.
And so, and, and the, the key here, too, and we've mentioned to our neighbors and worked with them on this, there is no connectivity, either pedestrian or vehicular, from our site to the property to the east.
Yeah, no, I understood that. I was just trying to make sure that they could still access the elements that it might be intended for, so. And then, is this a gated, uh, apartment complex, or no?
Yes, it is.
So is there any consideration? So I'm looking, I'm thinking of your north boundary now, and how you're arguing for a six-foot instead of an eight-foot, because really, what is it, what is it bariering from? But, but is there any concern for, um, malintended people to, to hop the fence from the north? Because that's, they have easy access to that very wide and accessible, uh, separation between the city's buildings and yours. I mean, I'm, I'm thinking of your people, and would you not want maybe that additional protection, especially if you're gated? That means you want to secure yourselves.
Yeah. No, uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Caveney, that's a very fair point and good question. Uh, our experience in the development of now close to 10,000 apartment units by Watermark, they're comfortable with the six-foot wall. They do not think that it's going to be, that there'll be mischief from back there and that the six-foot wall will accomplish what needs to be done.
Yeah, and I think I'd be more concerned if it was residential backyards.
I would, too.
Yeah, yeah. Because then they could jump right, directly into it. So, okay, fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anyone else? Uh, Commissioner Johns.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Um, uh, since we're on the screen, uh, that 10 feet, who maintains that? I mean, who, and, and I, I'm just kind of curious, because I don't think that you guys should have to maintain it because it's not your property, but it is a potential fire hazard eventually, and there's going to be a lot of trash.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Johns, the answer to that question is, that 10-foot area is a tract on the Settlers Point South plat, and it is maintained by the HOA of Settlers Point.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, and then, uh, I just want to make a comment about some, uh, I think Commissioner Froelich, um, you mentioned to extend that duly wall. Um, duly walls can't be extended. I mean, they, they are six-foot, and that, or usually five, but...
Commissioner Johns, can I add one more point of security? Our two neighbors here are very, very vigilant about that property, and will pay close attention to that area.
Commissioner Alabrande?
Chairman Anderson, thank you. Evening, Mr. Pugh, how are you?
Hi, good evening, Mr. Alabrande.
Um, I want to address the north wall, and I do understand you, you questioned us to understand what are we trying to protect from the north. I would turn around to the applicant, why is it so important to go from eight to six?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Alabrande, the answer to that question is, uh, quite frankly and honestly, to us, under these conditions, it's an economic waste. Because constructing an eight-foot block wall, which if this were single-family, we would pay for and do, it really is that.
I appreciate your honesty. It's economics. We're saving 25% of materials and, and labor.
And, and our experience tells us it's not necessary.
Right. Uh, to the south, Chairman Anderson, my concern is, is that it's really the end state that we care about. If we are okay with the six-foot wall, you know, two-thirds of the way, and then we have this shed or whatever it is, and this, you know, the two-inch encroachment, I don't even know how they're going to sell the property to begin with. But, once that gets resolved, if we were to agree to leave the six-foot wall in place, because it's on somebody's property now, how do we ensure something is done about the current shed structure slash wall? We really have no control over that, do we? So it's the end, it's, it's a rhetorical question, it's really the end state. How do we get to where we think this needs to be, or does there need to be a wall, period? A rhetorical question.
Mr. Chairman, can I answer that, or?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Alabrande, uh, in, in our experience and opinion, that will get resolved because the developer of the southern property cannot abide that structure there, and they'll want landscaping, and they'll want a nice wall to whatever they're doing. We will eventually be talking to each other. I'm confident of that, just not right now.
I would think the only scenario where it would stay is somebody bought it and kept it single-family and moved it, moved their family into it.
Exactly. Yeah, yeah.
But that's just prime real estate. I, I don't see that happening.
They could claim it's illegal non-conformity, but we don't know the answer to that either.
Okay. Uh, Vice Chair.
Thank you. Ralph, good to see you tonight.
Hey, Commissioner, nice to see you, too.
Excuse me, Mr. Pugh. I was just looking up on, on the plat because I had a...
I was just looking up on the plat because I had a question as to what was the purpose of that 10-foot tract and the 10-foot tract is dedicated as an irrigation easement. So, presumably, because this property slopes toward Gilbert Road, that would be irrigation line for these properties that you're, that you're purchasing.
This probably tiled and underground.
Presumably. I would, I would think that that's probably it. So, it does need to still, if that's the case, then it needs to have access down through there and this would solve that. And my question earlier of Mr. Newman was only to try to figure out if, if it was supposed to be a landscape easement, it's going to be really awkward to hike your lawnmower and your weed eater and all that stuff down through there and take care of it if that's what the purpose of it is and, and, but it's not.
It's not.
So, it, it's going to be wide open and...
We, we will landscape west of that...
Supposedly it should be that.
Uh, wrought iron fence. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah.
Sure. So, I, I'm okay with the eight-foot wrought iron fence on the, on the east side and, and I'm, given the conditions, I'm good with six-foot on the north side. And I'm okay with leaving the existing wall as is with the understanding that it's eight-foot is our standard barring a reason why not to. And in this case, on the south, there, I agree. Your hands are kind of tied and it's not in, it's not in your owner's best interest to keep a wall that's maybe not meeting their standards, maybe not constructed quite right, looks goofy. And I'm, I'm assuming that that's what that wall looks like, but I don't know that for sure.
Yeah.
And, and so, it's going to get taken care of, just like you said.
Yeah.
And let's leave it as a condition to, but my preference would be, depending on what happens to the south, to make it an eight-foot wall. But you'll come to that conclusion as you figure out what's going on between the two property owners and you'll make that determination at that point.
Yeah.
But granting the variance now seems a little off. Just let you move forward with that wall in its current condition, knowing that it's going to get taken care of at some point in the future. And our preference would be that it be eight feet. That's, because that's code. And, and there's no real, I mean, we would have it be an eight-foot if it's, if it's multi-family and single-family, which is what it's zoned today. That's what we would request it to be and that's what we would require it to be. We, we don't really do a lot of fence variances or wall variances, but it makes sense in the north side. But I'm not sure that it makes so much sense in the south side. Let's just say it's supposed to be eight and let you move forward and knowing that it's going to get that way at some point, you can't control it at this point.
Yeah.
All right. Anyone else? Commissioner Alabrandi?
Vice Chair Bloomfield, I guess my question is, I don't see the path, how it's going to get there. Two-thirds of the fence is on the southern property and it's sold, I don't know, they're going, they're not going to willingly tear it down and turn it into eight feet. And we're actually saving the north property, Watermark, the economic investment of having to put a southern fence in. Not that I'm trying to stick you guys with a couple hundred thousand dollars of fence.
Yeah, yeah.
It's just that I don't see how it's going to get resolved. I don't see how this ends well.
Given, given the two current property owners, there is no motivation on the south property owners to do it.
Understood.
In the future, at the price point that that property is selling, it's not going to stay in its current condition.
Yeah.
It will be developed. When it gets developed, it could stay single-family. That's what it's zoned for and they could build it out and they would never come before the zoning commission or the planning commission. But not real likely.
Would the expectation be then to continue that six-foot wall for the last eastern third, properly surveyed and leave it at six-foot? Or are we going to make the new property owner take it down and build it up?
If you're building a wall, I would say build it at eight because that's, that's the code. I mean, you're asking, they are requesting a variance tonight.
Yeah.
And...
Well, deviation, not a variance.
Deviation, okay. They're asking for a deviation tonight and I'm willing to ground it, even on the east side, make it a six-foot wrought iron fence. I, I don't care. But, but the LDC standard is eight. Why? And that's kind of outside of our purview, but these, these conditions make sense to take it to six. I'm not sure that between the two zoning categories, the one that they're requesting for their general plan and, and multi-family, it requires an eight. And, and they, it requires an eight next to single-family and that's what it is zoned currently today. Where, there's no guesswork about that. Let's just have it be an eight. They just can't do it currently right now.
I can see...
But if they construct one, it needs to be an eight-foot.
I can see it'd be really hard.
Is that fair enough?
It'd be really hardcore. We would require the eight-foot fence on the southern boundary on their property and you got two walls side by side, which again, is not kosher.
Right.
And ridiculous.
Right. And I'm, I'm, I'm not willing to do that, but if a wall gets built in the future, it needs to be an eight-foot. That's my opinion.
Commissioner Bloomfield, can I, can I turn that into a question with a simple suggestion? You, you can take it or leave it, obviously. I think what we have here are conflicting code requirements. No parallel block walls together and the eight-foot height. As much as you hate the lateral, more burden to the staff after you have multiple text amendments, it might be worthy of some study to create a section in your code to deal with this very situation. There just isn't any today. That's, would be my suggestion for the long-term solution, Commissioner.
Okay, we're going to keep this moving along. I do, taking you, Mr. Pugh, you'll have another opportunity to come back up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, I do have two comment cards from the public. Uh, one is from Luis Bonilla. Would you like to speak?
Yeah.
Yeah, sure. Come on up. You just say your name and address for the record.
Yeah.
And then I have another card, Hans Hernandez. You just say you're opposed to the item, but you don't say if you want to wish or speak. Would you like to speak?
Oh.
Okay, you can go in after Mr. Bonilla. Uh, you'll have three minutes.
Okay. So, Luis Bonilla, I live on 210 East Jasper Court. It's the property on the northeast corner of that. So, one of my biggest issues is that 10-foot tract, which will end up being an alley, just because of, I guess, the consequences in the future. I mean, people can use it for dumping. People can go back there and, and do different things. And I know the apartments are right there and they'll have a view fence, but there'll also be trees in the area that'll kind of block that area. And the irrigation ditch is on the, on the west property, which is on Watermark property. So, there's really no reason to have an easement there anymore. So, I don't know why we couldn't just require adding an eight-foot wall in that area. I guess if the HOA and Watermark can work together to just move that fence over and, and not have that double wall, one view fence in that, in our five to six-foot wall at Settlers Point. That's, that's my biggest thing because I don't really see, again, I don't really see the reason to have an easement there anymore. If they're probably going to bury their irrigation ditch and there's also no, I guess, no need for access on our property side for that irrigation ditch when it's on Watermark's property. And I guess, as always, you know, they, they've done some to accommodate some of our concerns, especially privacy, but privacy from a three-story building is kind of difficult. But that's, especially, you know, since, since our properties are on the, on the east side. But yeah, that's all, that's all I had.
Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Hernandez?
Uh, same. If you could state your name and address for the record, please, and you will have three minutes as well.
Hello, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. My name is Hans Hernandez, 211 East Jasper Court, right on the east side. Neighbors with this guy here. So, me and him actually bought our properties not too long ago, May 2018. And, you know, the reason, I think, both our houses sold was because of the potential rezoning of this area. Fortunately, we didn't know that. But it, the first, I, I just wanted to address a couple of my concerns that I have from living right next to, to that property. I think the first concern would be the privacy. Being a three-story building, looking over my, my backyard, you know, that, you know, I don't think, you know, that would go very well with my family, with our privacy, with our, so I'm already planning to put trees on, on that side. But I was overlooking right now in the gym and I could clearly see in, in people's backyard. So, I think that's number one concern for me. Another concern would be safety. I know the residents, residents there, you know, that they might be, you know, well people, but who knows, right? Who knows who would come through the street and then go through the alley where it would be enclosed in two fences. So, I think the, the safety concern would, is, is a pretty big one. Who could, you know, anybody could jump that fence. Another, another of my concerns would be devaluation of my home. I know there's no direct correlation with that, but, you know, it's, it's something, something worth to see. If, if I were to buy my home back into May 2018 and I saw a three-story, three-foot story building, I wouldn't have bought it. So, I think, you know, just getting buyers, I, I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking to sell my home at the moment, but, you know, it's something, something to consider. And, and also the traffic, the influx of traffic that's going to bring. I know Gilbert's a growing city and we have the, the beautiful town, shopping town square developed here in the corner. So, I think just the influx of traffic. It's already taken me a while to get to Tempe where my employment is. So, you know, I'm pretty sure you guys have evaluated that in your evaluation of this rezoning. But those are some of my concerns and I do thank the, the property management for, for actually working with us on that eight-foot wrought iron fence and the, the landscape of it. So, and that's all I have for, for, for the moment. Any questions?
I think we're good. Thank you, Mr. Hernandez.
Thank you.
So, I'd like to invite the applicant to come back up if they'd like to respond to what they've heard. You'll have about five minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, thank you to our neighbors for their comments and they've been very good to meet with us and talk and see what we can work out. I think the first comment about the easement area, the 10-foot area where they, the neighbors have their block wall, then we have the easement for irrigation and then our proposed wrought iron fence. At some point, the ability to remove that area so that it's not an open space easement would be when the, the, the irrigation line that is on our eastern boundary, when it's tiled and underground, it has to continue to serve properties to the south. So, the only way that that area, that 10-foot area could ever be abandoned would be to have the utility that has the right to use it through the easement that was dedicated in the plat to agree to that. So, if that could happen, I mean, we're happy to try to facilitate that and do all we can because we understand it, but we can't undo that easement that was dedicated on the plat. Only the beneficiary of the plat could do that. The other question about the privacy and the separation. So, what we've done here is we've gone over and above even your new step-back code. The building on the east is 121 feet from the property line. Then you have the 10-foot easement area. Then you have existing landscape that's there. And on our side of the boundary line, we're going to do a 50-foot wide landscape area that will have trees and all kinds of landscape. So, we've done all we can do. We, we know it's probably still not perfect and not enough, but as you look at cases and weigh them, balance them, we think we've gone way overboard with separating the building more than we need to and adding much more landscaping. The devaluation of homes, that's always an interesting topic. Our view of it is, based on Watermark's reputation and the quality of their design and product, this is going to clean up an uncertain area. And what the real estate market likes is certainty. And once this building and these structures are built and functional, we think it will be an asset to the area. It will clean it up and frankly, it will promote better and improved development south of there, which overall should accrue, increase the appeal to the property to the west. And of course, traffic, well, we know there's traffic in Gilbert, but certainly, this project will not place any traffic into Settlers Point. There'll be more traffic on Gilbert Road, no question about it. But no matter what goes there, that's going to happen over time, but not immediately into their neighborhood. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, for listening to us.
All right. Thank you. Do we have any questions for the staff? Do we want to bring them back up? Okay. Keith, can you come, please come back up to the podium?
And yeah, go ahead, Keith, you can come up. But maybe, I think one of the things I just want to understand is we've talked about and asked a lot of questions, but I wanted to deliberate a little bit about it eventually. So, I want to make sure this is on the table. Is there any opinion from, from our legal department about that south wall being on someone else's property and the ability to make stipulations according to it or about it?
Commissioner Cavaney, I, I would agree. We're not going to force. So, and, and the idea is to encourage, always encourage property owners to work together. But even if we had the authority, I'm not sure how we would enforce that.
So, essentially, if you're going, if you were to enforce it, you would enforce it with the next developer, that whoever buys that south property because the wall's on their side, then the town does have some stance to force that wall to be torn down and built back up to eight feet, would they not?
Well, technically, you know, what's under the jurisdiction of the commission is the application that's before them and the property. So, anything that's kind of outside the property lines is, is not within our scope. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Would we ever, and I know we don't like to do wall-to-wall, but we, we do have an applicant who we're trying to get a boundary that complies with code right now. Bill, can we ask them to build something adjacent? And when the new buyer buys or whatever the seller does, if, they can tear down whatever they want to, but that eight-foot wall still stays according to code and does its job. And can we require that or is that just absolutely not cool to put a wall closed?
My understanding, and staff can correct me, but I remember looking this up. I didn't see anything that specifically says no double walls.
Okay.
It's just a matter of safety and, and at some point, that does need to be addressed.
And in a way, constructability too. Understood. Yeah. So, I just wonder, I mean, at this point, we can require to stay with code or vary according to what we think is right. But I, I think, once they walk away, we can't make them work together and the new owner may come tear it down and we don't have a wall at all. So, I think we have a problem there. So, I'm trying to think of a way we can appropriately stipulate without creating a problem in the interim. That's what I'm trying to do.
And, and I would ask, Mr. Pugh, I mean, and we haven't even like talked about it, but maybe there's something where something's recorded on the property in the event of, but I don't know if that's something that we can, yeah.
Because I think in the end, our goal is to have a wall there, a nice barrier wall that protects the facility and the other side too, whatever. Actually, really just protects this property is the goal here. And we have a hindrance. And so, how do we do that, right? So, okay, cool. Thanks.
Anyone else?
Chairman Anderson?
Yes.
If I may, really quick. So, from a, from a town staff standpoint, the double wall situation's not ideal. You're, she's right, and Nancy's right. There's really nothing in the code that specifically addresses that, but it is a nuisance. It could be classified as a nuisance. So, so that's staff's position on it. We don't encourage those situations because they are a nuisance. And from a construction standpoint, how, how are they supposed to construct footers and all those things? It's, it's pretty complicated to do that. But it is, but it is a nuisance and that's the main thing for town staff. And another thing I'd like to bring up, this could be a question of timing as well. We had considered a potential condition of approval that would allow them to construct the wall over time. For example, they could construct the wall within three years of approval of the design review application. That would give them enough time to be able to work with the property owner to the south. They can sell the property. Someone buys it, they can work with them to, to be able to construct some type of joint wall instead of having a double wall situation. So, that's something that, that staff would be open to is, is crafting a condition concerning timing of construction of the wall.
Again, the concern is you, you can't make them work together. I mean, let's say they just don't get along and...
Right.
And then what you're doing is you're eventually imposing the burden on the southern property owner because he's last man standing and well, wall's got to go up, so it's yours now, you know? So, I, I'm just concerned about that. And, and there are ways to build walls. You do L-footings. You can actually even do a little offset. There are ways to do it. But again, we don't want to create a nuisance either, to your point. So, I guess I'm looking for, for some combined brain power here to come up with the right solution to make sure that their property is properly protected and according to code and the southern boundary likewise, and then is not exceptionally burdened. So...
Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Cavaney, I, I agree. It is an unfortunate situation. I was trying to think of solutions as well. At a minimum, I believe that the wall that needs to be constructed, that joins to the east, that that should be an eight-foot wall and it should have the footing, even if we let them perhaps like the last four feet transition down to six feet, the footing should... down to six feet, the footing should still be made to support the eight-foot wall. So at a minimum, the applicant is doing that at eight foot. You can then also phase the completion of the wall, as Mr. Newman said, over three years. That gives the applicant and the neighbor time to figure out if they want to keep the remainder of the wall at six feet or if they want to go at eight feet. Another thing, just to assure that you are going by the code, you could make a stipulation that the applicant owner and get a written notification that the homeowner to the south is aware of the code requirement for an eight-foot wall and that he is willingly waiving that requirement. And then at least you know both parties are aware of it and you're not putting an undue burden on the neighbor to the south if they don't want an eight-foot wall there now.
Okay. And I guess whatever we want to propose, we certainly want to make sure the applicant is, you know, aligned with us in what is being required of them. So.
I guess for me, just the whole idea of, well, we'll have this three-year timeframe for them to work it out, you know. If I was a developer on the south side and I bought it and all right, I got a six-foot wall on my side, there's a stipulation on the guy to the north that he has to work with me. Well, you know what? I don't want to incur that additional cost. I'm happy with a six-foot wall. And then they can say, well, I'm happy with a six-foot wall too. And it just doesn't get done. So I don't think that's really a, a resolution to this. My whole stance is the wall's on the south property line. They have no right to tear it down. And it's the town's, I don't think the town has the right to impose that onto the north property owner. If it was a true boundary line, boundary line wall where it's half and half on each side, I think that's, we'd have more of a leg to do that. But because it's solely on the south property line, it's just, I, I don't know how we can legally do anything to that wall right now. I think it has to remain as is. And then work with whoever buys the south property, however that gets developed, work with those landowners and say, well, in our LDC, it's supposed to be an eight-foot wall. And then, you know, maybe that's the opportunity where we can legally get that wall into code. So what's some of the other people's kind of thoughts on this?
Commissioner Alabrande?
Chairman Anderson, I'm, I'm okay with the, the variance on the north property and I'm okay with the east. I am getting a little concerned about kicking the can down the road. And as much as I think a double wall is untenable, you know, I'll, I'll use the term letting them off the hook economically of having to put up a southern wall. They're going to, they're relying upon an existing wall that's not on their property, that's going to be at risk for whoever develops it later. We don't know what's going to go to the south. Will it be multifamily? Will it be single, is somebody going to be forced two years from now saying, I want to put a mansion there and some future commission's going to give a variance? We don't know what's going to happen to the south. So I'm concerned about, I don't want to put a burden on the applicant, but I'm concerned that we're not, again, I don't see how this works out.
Yeah, I understand your concern, but we've also had the, you know, Keith and the staff coming on saying that they don't want a double wall either.
Right.
I'm sure the applicant doesn't want it, but if we have staff saying that they don't want it as well, in my mind, I, I still don't see that that's on the, on the table as well.
Is a Solomon-like decision for the, where they have that overlap of the wall, not the structure, where we can't require anyone to tear down a structure, but the existing wall for that eastern quarter, that, that will have to be properly done 50-50 split or right on the line. We could insist on that being eight foot. And I like the idea of somebody with a transition, you know, to the shed, shed or house, whatever it is. And then at that point, that's all we can do, I believe. And then a future commission will deal with it, perhaps. Is that the only way we can go?
Is that the portion of wall that's like two inches onto the north property?
Right. So that is shared at that point?
And that's railing?
Railing. Okay.
So, and maybe, I mean, maybe we're envisioning the, the double wall too restrictive here. I mean, again, I don't remember what the setback was at that edge before you hit any structures. I think there's a parking garage or a parking building there or whatever. But this wall could theoretically, in my mind, and again, I'm curious about staff's opinion here, could even be a couple of feet away, a few feet away. It doesn't have to be right on the line necessarily and to still meet code as far as having a barrier of separation. So maybe that's the answer is just push it in, be in control of your own wall. You will have a little bit of a no man's land that will be main, maintenance requirements are still going to be challenging, right? But it doesn't have to necessarily be an inch away or two inches away kind of situation where you, you just, you have a nuisance, as you mentioned. So I don't know. Just another thought. Gives room to do the footings too in a better way.
Yeah.
So the, the view fence or the, what is it? A view fence that's on the east side? Is the applicant, were they planning on tearing that down and putting up a block wall?
Go adjacent to, I understand.
Mr. Chairman, on the, on the east side, we're planning on constructing an eight-foot view fence on, on the property line.
On the east side of the south property.
Yeah, he means the rail, the rail fence is what he means.
I'm sorry.
Oh, oh, on where the, oh, excuse me, I misunderstood. So on the south side where the rail fence is on the east end?
Yes.
We would construct a wall adjacent to that because we think we can do that. And if you want that at eight feet, we're happy to do that.
So you guys are agreeable to an eight-foot wall for that section?
Absolutely.
Okay. How do we feel about that?
Agreed.
A little better?
And I don't think it solves the big picture though. I think, I think it, it is fine. And I agree, eight-foot wall, I do agree on that. So it should be eight.
It doesn't solve the big picture.
It doesn't solve the big picture. It just gets us partwayed like we are today. Because I think the concern, and I'm concerned, and I, I don't know how vested this applicant is in the long-term experience of this development, but are they really going to want to come back in three years and expend the capital to build the rest of the wall? You know what I mean? If that's what happens. So.
The, the, the other uncertainty here, Commissioners and staff and everyone is, it's the unknown of the southern property. I, I think we can all pretty much say it's extremely unrealistic that it would continue to be a single-family home. Possible, yes, but very unrealistic. And if it happens to go multifamily, then we'll have to work with that property owner and solve this issue. Forgot one thing too. On the, on the step back, the staff was indifferent to the 8.5 versus 10 feet. We would respectfully ask that that be clarified so that it's a 10-foot issue, not 8.5. We'd hate to get into field and construction and have a, an air conditioning, something that goes a foot here or there. The 10-foot would be perfect. That still gives you 90 feet to the habitable area.
I was fine with that. Yeah, I didn't have a
Yeah, I had no issue with that.
I think, I think we're all just focused on the wall.
Yeah. Chairman Anderson?
Seems like a funny thing to do in a general plan zoning case.
Commissioner Cavaney.
As Solomon, you, you have split the baby. The only question is, how would the eight-foot wall eventually merge when that structure is essentially going to go away? We, good assumption it would. That's going to be interesting to see how we're going to merge those two walls together. Just, and that's a
Are you talking the height?
Not even the height. I mean, physically, if, if one's on the, right on the, the eight-foot wall is going to be, is it going to be 50-50? Or is it going to be simply all in the applicant's area? Because that six-foot wall is currently all in the other area. So you're going to have that little jog, a little no man's land. That'll be interesting.
Yeah.
But again, that's a minor detail. If you solve the big issue of at least getting, there's a six-foot wall, there's an eight-foot wall, there's a, a structure, at least there's a barrier.
Yeah.
Yeah. Chairman?
Vice Chair.
I can appreciate that this is a unique, I don't have any problems with any part of the project. I'm just questioning about this only because it's a code thing. And, and we're asked to uphold the code and wherever possible. But in this case, it doesn't make sense to go ahead and, and you can't do anything on that property. We've already discussed that. And so I would only stipulate in here, if there is a wall built on that property line, that it'd be an eight. If one is constructed, it needs to be an eight-foot constructed wall. Whatever's there is there. You can't control any of that. You can't do anything about it. But it's in your property owner's best interest. It's in your developer's best interest that when there is an opportunity to figure out what's going on with that wall, that they'll make that. With, with the end user of the property to the south, that's going to happen. I mean, it's just going to. We all feel pretty comfortable that that's going to happen, that, that the property's going to be sold to a developer and they're going to do something with it. It may not require a zoning case, but it will require an opportunity for that wall to be reconfigured and reconstructed. And, and when it does so, it needs to be an eight-foot wall. We can't resolve any other issues tonight other than if one is built, it needs to be an eight-foot.
I don't think it's as simple. I don't think it's if it gets built. I think, so we have a development that at some point in the near future will be a completed apartment complex that needs a wall, right? According to code, needs a wall. And, well, they don't. They, they don't have a, a wall that meets the code like we want it. It has a structure attached. It has rail on one end. Even if we make them build that piece, I'm still not sure it completes the code requirement. I, I don't know. And maybe we can get there. But that's my thinking is we get to the end of this development and we go to give them a permit, you know, a certificate of occupancy and we say there has to be an eight-foot wall that they can't sign them off. So I don't know. I don't know.
Commissioner Cavaney, or Chairman Anderson, to address Chairman Cavaney's point, then to, we appreciate that we need to follow the code. And then the only answer there would be for them to do some sort of minor setback and they have to put a complete wall up on their own, eight-foot high, as economically as ugly as that might be. But that seems to be the only solution. That's the code and that if it was on the front page of East Valley Tribune, we could defend.
I think you're probably right. I think that's the right answer.
Are you suggesting that a second wall be built adjacent to the existing one?
Sadly, yes, sir.
Yeah, I just, I don't know if I can jump on board with that. So like, is it butting up against it? Is that how you envisioning it?
I would say there would have to be some sort of, you know, reasonable setback of five to 10 feet.
So I guess the issue I have with that is, so if they build a, a wall, eight-foot wall on their property that's five to 10-foot setback from the real property line, that next person comes in, tears that wall down, they just got five to 10 feet free land.
And, yes.
I don't think that's fair to the applicant.
Then they could try to make it closer. But then you have a problem with the reality of trying to put something two feet away. I've dealt with fence to fence. I understand not encroaching on somebody's property and, yeah.
Well, that's a great point though, Chairman. That's a great point. And so maybe, maybe the right answer, though, one more option I hear is, is we, we take a risk here and we, we do put a stipulation into the approval that they, they continue working with staff throughout the life of this project to eventually get an eight-foot wall there at some point, kind of back to where you were, Bill. I mean, that, that keeps them endeared to the project for who knows how long. And it keeps staff vigilant on the case. But, but I tend to agree, you, you create, you, you bring another very good point up that we do that and in the future, we're going to have this weird no man's land that actually becomes another guy's property. So, yeah.
I, I, I think the good compromise is building that eight-foot wall on the east side that you control. I think that is a good compromise because it can integrate with the future eight-foot wall. I also don't like putting the time restriction into this. I do like the idea that we have to take this through and, and once it develops, it will be an eight-foot wall for that property. But that's the best we can do, I think, at this point.
So I, I have a quick question for staff down there. So we're actually voting on two cases right now, a general plan and a zoning. Which one of these cases does the wall affect? Is it zoning or is it both?
That would be the zoning.
Okay. So the GP, the wall has nothing to do with that. So we could, right, we could do a recommendation for that fairly easily. Okay. So why don't we do that? Just to keep this thing going. Let's, let's do a, a motion on GP 19DR01. And then we'll get back on the zoning case with this wall thing and see how we craft that. And I think what we, you know, we're also, we're not doing an approval because it's a zoning case. It's a recommendation to council. So I guess there's one, a few options that you guys, how you want to do with it. You can either, you know, keep going forward with the zoning case, put a recommendation out there to council and you guys can go to council and, and go with them. Or we could not table, what's the other word? Continue. You don't want to do that. Okay. All right. So.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Sorry. I was visiting with the staff for a minute. A possible solution. It's clear that you all want to abide by your code, eight-foot wall. We understand that. So please move this case forward with a recommendation for approval of the general plan amendment and the zoning case and insert some language to the council that we need to work with staff to figure out a solution to this untenable situation. It's nobody's fault. And let's just, let us work with the staff to try to figure out how to do this. We're not going to, it's not going to be made at the dais tonight. Now that, that won't, that'll be ugly, right? You know, we'll all wonder what it means later, but just lateral it over to the staff and let us work with them.
Okay. Is that what you guys were going to jump in on?
Yeah. Nothing stops from saying, you know, they enter into some, you know, whether it's tied to a certificate of occupancy or if it's entering into an agreement with, with the town or, you know, so, so suggestions are fine as part of the recommendation.
And I think that's where Council, Commissioner Cavaney and Alabrande were kind of going with, weren't you? Just add some sort of condition to it, something like that.
Chairman Anderson, my only concern is that if it's not clear and not enforceable, I, I think we do the applicant a disservice that there's no clear path. And to kick it back to staff and for, because my understanding is in a perfect world, we are always unanimous with our recommendations up or down to the, to the town council. And I would, I would not want to, I, I would want to give them a clear direction that there was a good solution to that. And I don't think we're there yet.
Well, and may I, Chairman, I definitely agree with you, but I think a, a great point was just made too by the applicant that really, we are making a clear decision that we want an eight-foot wall there. Figure it out, right? And again, we're not, we're not the engineers. We're not the planners. We're not the solvers. But I think our direction is clear. We want an eight-foot wall there. We need you to work with staff to figure out how to do that.
And I appreciate that, Chairman Cavaney. My only concern is that we could say that, but then down the road, it's, if it's not enforceable and there's no penalty, and again, I'm not trying to be punitive, to either applicant or future applicant to the south, we haven't done our job. We haven't enforced the code. We have every expectation right now, as is, there's a reasonable chance the code will not be enforced.
Chairman?
Yes.
Commissioner Alabrande, I think what we were discussing with the applicant was not that, you know, two, three years from now, that decision is made, that this goes back to staff before it goes to council. Perhaps you stipulate that, you know, you're in favor of this project. However, the desire of the commission is to have an eight-foot wall along the southern portion prior to this being heard by council. The applicant, staff and the neighbor directly to the south will further discuss this item or reach a resolution or something like that. So that it's before council hears it, that we have done the extra study. But that your position is that you favor an eight-foot wall along the southern boundary.
Chairman Anderson, my understanding then, ma'am, is that you're saying that we would not get another cut on it. We're going to rely on staff and it's going to go to the town council as you
Correct. That is correct. But your recommendation to town council is that you prefer the eight-foot wall along the southern boundary and that before they hear it, staff, the applicant and the neighbor to the south will explore further options for that.
Personally, I can buy into that. I mean, it's not our responsibility to design their wall. It's their responsibility to design their wall and work with staff to make that work. Our responsibility is to that homeowner to the south to give him the opportunity to fill the ordinance. So.
Commissioner Johns, I, I agree with you and I, I like the way you, and I could support the way you worded that.
Nancy, did you have anything you wanted to say? No? Okay. Okay. So let me, um, let me, let me just look down there. Are you guys agreeable to kind of what you've been hearing so far?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you. So we'll close the public hearing. Let's entertain a motion for GP 19-01. Watermark at Gilbert.
Hey Chairman.
Commissioner Cavaney.
I move to adopt the attached resolution approving GP 19-01 and move to make the findings a fact and adopt the attached ordinance approving Z 19-05, subject to the two conditions in the staff report.
Motion to recommend approval is a second.
Don't we have to do a GP only?
To modify it. I think we're modifying the zoning, not the GP. Is that correct?
They're both together.
We're modifying both.
They're both together. I'm sorry. Let me separate that. Let me separate.
It's only going to do a
I read them both. I should have just
You read them both. Oh, okay.
My fault. Let me redo. Okay. Chairman, I move to adopt the attached resolution approving GP 19-01.
Second.
Second from Vice Chair. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Both say nay. Motion carries.
Motion carries?
Take a stab at Z, let me take a stab at Z.
Okay, take a stab at Z, but...
See if I get it right.
Remember to include the 10-foot step back with the buildings, because I think it's eight, eight and a half feet now, isn't it? Okay.
So, Chairman, I move to make the findings effect and adopt the attached ordinance approving Z 19-05, subject to the two conditions in the staff report, and allowing the variance to a six-foot wall on the northern boundary in lieu of an eight-foot wall, and modifying the step back to 10 feet from the 8.5 feet. And our recommendation includes a preference for an eight-foot wall on the south boundary, subject to staff working with the applicant to achieve that.
I would only add pride for the council meeting.
Prior to the council meeting, thank you.
Have you guys got that? Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Commissioner Al Brandi with the second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Say no. Motion carries? Boy, that was a long one over a wall.
No one better throw a ball over that wall, they'll never get it back.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we'll move along to admin items. Planning Commission minutes, consider approval of the minutes of the study session and regular meeting of July 10, 2018. Vice Chair, can I get a motion, please?
I move that we approve the planning commission minutes.
Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Lee, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I need to abstain, as I was not there.
I abstained, too, Chairman, I wasn't here either.
Oh, Chairman Anderson, then I must abstain as well.
Did anybody show up that month?
As well, I need to abstain as well.
I was here. It was embarrassing. No, it was good.
On the list.
Communications, report from Chairman and members of the commission on current events. I have nothing to report to somebody else. Not seeing any. Report from Planning Services Manager on current events.
Just that we are working on the general plan, and that that's moving along according to schedule.
Great, thank you. You have nothing more, we'll adjourn. Adjourned.